Welcome to the San Francisco City Council special meeting of January the 28th, 2025. The meeting has been called order of roll call phase.
Councilwoman Alvarez, yeah? Councilwoman Hamilton?
Here.
Councilwoman Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marne Medina?
Here.
Item number three, closed session. It will be conference with labor negotiators and that is for the employee organizations with the city of San Bruno. The council will go into the conference room into closed session and then we will leave being out here back once we're done with closed session. And right now, we will move to conference room please council for closed session.
Thank you, and welcome to the San Francisco City Council special meeting of January the 28th, 2025. The meeting has been called order of roll call phase.
Councilwoman Alvarez, yeah? Councilwoman Hamilton?
Here.
Councilwoman Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marne Medina?
Here.
Item number three, closed session. It will be conference with labor negotiators and that is for the employee organizations with the city of San Bruno. The council will go into the conference room into closed session and then we will leave being out here back once we're done with closed session.
City Council will come back into session. From our closed session, there is no reportable action at this time. We're going to move on to item number four, which is our study session.
Receive update on the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street grade separation project and provide direction on the optimized alternative.
Thank you very much, and we have been to make sure six o'clock before we start this topic. In fact, it is six in the morning, and I will turn it over to Juan Richi, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I'm Haylon Richi, your City Engineer and Deputy Health and Work Director. Very good, all right. The item I have for you tonight is an update on the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street grade separation project. The last time this item was reported was in November twenty twenty. It's been a while, but I along with the project development team are here to provide an update on what has occurred on the project since that time. So tonight's agenda consists of the objectives, introductions, project background, the presentation from Caltrain, tonight's recommended action, next steps, and opportunity for questions. Tonight's objective is to provide City Council with an update on the South Linden and Avenue and Scott Street grade separation project and see direction on the optimized alternative. I and the Caltrain team will provide more information on what the optimized alternative is for their presentation. I'd like to try and brief him some about this for those guys that tonight on this item. On Caltrain, we have Rob Bernard, he's the Chief of Rail Design and Construction. Ravi Dollyball, John Belsetta. We also have Geral Maxi with RSC, who is the designer. And on the call, we also have Jessica Nancy with San Mateo County Transportation Authority. So a brief background, this project has been before the City Council seven times from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty during the planning phase. There was extensive outreach and community engagement guiding the city's selection of preferred alternatives. In November twenty twenty, Council provided direction on proceeding with a preferred alternative number one, which was a hybrid option consisting of raising the rail tracks slightly, closing Scott Street to vehicular traffic, and installing a pedestrian and bicycle undercrossing. The guiding principles on this election were to eliminate the at-grade crossings for safety while also limiting future projected traffic delays associated with increased gate downtime, more frequent train traffic, and high-speed rail. Two, reduce property impacts by avoiding any private residential property acquisitions. And three, reduce visual privacy and travel distances related to pedestrian bicycle. The project study report says that the planning phase was completed in April of two thousand three. So with the conclusion of the planning phase and a pause in being funded for the next phase of the project, we entered the preliminary engineering and environmental phase. We received the bulk of our funding from San Mateo County Transportation Authority, and the designer RSC was retained. One of the first orders of business by Caltrain and RSC was to conduct value engineering on the preferred collective alternative. With the rapid escalation in the cost to deliver projects, value engineering aims to analyze strategies for reducing costs while preserving the main director's six for project. I will at this point turn the presentation over to Rob Bernard with Caltrain to present the results of this effort.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, House members, again, Rob Bernard, Chief, Rail Design and Construction for Caltrain. First, thank you for this opportunity to present information on this long hill. As we know, Scott Street is the only remaining macro crossing in the city of San Bruno. Council is very aware of its project goals. Improve safety, reduce the fee for transport toys, improve traffic flow, and also support transit oriented development as shown in San Bruno Transit Order Plan. City will share a brief background, review of prior work, presentation on current work efforts, these costs, and community impacts, present a comparison to alternatives, and seek guidance, take steps, and finally. As a background, Council is very aware that brothers who might not the crossings of South Linden, Scott Street are only about a third mile apart. Given the length of distance needed to raise lower freighter tracks, both cities collaboratively select an alternative for this combined profit project. I would like to note two main constraints on this slide. There is Coleman Creek on the left, and on the right is High Tree. These two constraints return to decision-making and the alternatives that we're exploring. Advancing this long hill vision requires collaborative leadership. The cities of San Bruno, South San Francisco are the project sponsors. San Mateo County Transit Authority is the funding board. This project, as originally was envisioned, includes modifications to Caltrain's safety critical systems on an operating grid via river. And so Caltrain is a leading payment agency. But from Caltrain's perspective, the cities are the client. For context, here are two parallel lines. Scott Street is on the left, and South Linden Street is on the right. As you can see, passenger service being provided along this alignment for the last hundred and sixty years, communities continue to develop along this regional transportation asset and are envisioned to continue as noted in San Bruno's Transit Order Plan. Next, moving on to the project study report. Here's an illustration of Scott Street, looking to them moving from right to left. On the right side, on the east side of the alignment, Scott Street is shown as being closed eastern side of the railroad line. The bicycle and pedestrian access ramps are also shown leading down to the railroad undercrossing, shown in green. On the left side of the image, from the west, that blue area is the bicycle and pedestrian access ramps leading down to the railroad undercrossing. On this side of the alignment, Scott Street is connected throughout the street. Wanted to go over a couple of key features at Scott Street. Again, going from right to left. Before I do that, wanted to just take a moment to talk a little bit about South London Avenue in South San Francisco. That location, the railroad tracks are raised fifteen feet in order to get up to the start of the presentation. So this location there about twenty five, huh? So here's material to this presentation. So on the right side, you'll see the bicycle and pedestrian access ramps leading to the railroad undercrossing. And right-of-way acquisition is required, shown in that blue box. At the end to the middle of the feature, you'll see a red box, and that's a Scott Street grade crossing. This is the future tracks, we're elevated about two and a half feet. On the left side, you'll see a purple area. That purple area is the shoe fly tracks that are necessary to provide continuous service while we raise those tracks fifteen feet in South San Francisco. That shoe fly has implications that temporarily reduces Herman Street to one lane and parking, but also impacts Scott Street by closing Scott Street for installation shoe flying. It's also important to note that the project study reports did take a look at the no build alternative as they considered alternatives. However, the no build alternative did not address several key factors. One is projected vehicle growth on Scott Street and its implications. The second is the projected rail service from Caltrain systems due to implications for gate downtime. Now, however, it is important to note the gate downtime projection shown on this slide from the pre-pandemic period. And we all know that the pandemic has impacted ridership on our systems. However, with the completion of electrification project and the launch of that service, ridership is returning. At a recent board meeting, we presented our ten-year financial strategic plan. That plan shows projected growth that will return to the pre-pandemic levels by two thirty four. So as ridership levels increase, so will gate downtime. So the original project study report, the term report, did have challenges. I want to take a quick note of what those challenges were. This is a very narrow constraint site. It's a mile long. They refer to that temporary electrified shoe fly, shoe fly. So that's on the the west side, on your left. In the middle, you're building a mile-long elevated electrified tracks. Then on the right side, you see your Pacific Railroad and Granite Road. Servers on your left, servers on your right, it's a mile-long with very limited access elevated. So it's a very constrained site. And that constrained site increases duration, increases risk, increases cost, and affects the viability of funding. So as Mr. T. noted, at the start of our engineering, we did some value engineering. This was done to take a look at constructibility because the how matters a lot to try to minimize cost. So next, moving on to what did we do? So Caltrain's emerging understanding, actively performing construction in electrified environment tells us we should look at alternatives after we try to improve the efficiency of construction in electrified environment. So with that, we took a good hard look at trying to optimize the design, reducing duration, reducing cost, trying to reduce impacts to the community. Construction has improved, have been reduced in duration. Have been reduced in footprint of the project to reduce impacts of both the community and the environment. So we took a deep dive in the constructibility, we took a deep dive in our impacts, utility relocations, there's relocation of Caltrain's fiber backbone and the fiber that you can civic as, and also traffic, those constructive efficiencies. So that value engineering effort resulted in a potential alternative using box jacking. This is a new working technology that we're exploring at Mountain View's great crossings at Castro and Rainstorm. We looked at those. Although, however, it's not one size fits all. It doesn't work everywhere. We're also exploring it at Manlo Park for their undercrossing providing pedestrians. And we're also exploring it at Palo Alto for their three great crosses as well. Here's an example of box jacking. If a concrete box is built, and then they use hydraulic jacks to push the box underneath the railroad. The right side is similar to what Scott Street might look like, and the left side is similar to what South Linden Scott would look like. As an example, Bright Line Trains in Orlando, Florida was the first North American project to use this technology. They created a railroad underpass underneath State Route five twenty eight under live traffic. Essentially, what they did over a two-week period, they brought in a box, jacked underneath the road, created a railroad tunnel underneath State Route five twenty eight in two weeks. How can you minimize costs, reduce duration, reduce impacts? This looks like a viable technology. So using this method, what changed? So it's important to note that the optimized alternative does not make any material changes to the overall fundamental configuration. It's still an undercrossing that was invented previously. The pedestrians and bicyclists still go through all the railroad tracks. But what has changed is it's no longer need to elevate the tracks. They stay at brim. Also, there's no need for that shoe fly. And remember, the shoe fly besides the cost to build a temporary electrified shoe fly aisle, besides avoiding the cost, that shoe fly had implications for closure of Scott Street. It also had implications on the temporary basis, inducing Herman Street to one lane parking. You no longer need that shoe fly. It mitigates those impacts. So here is an image to compare the two. On the left is the original project study alternative plot. On the right is the optimized effort. Looking closely, you can see on the right side, the tracks are now at brim versus on the left, they're elevated on a retaining wall. So here are a couple of images. This is looking towards Hermans Street. The ramps upstairs and the coal is at, at Scott Street, are behind you on the left. So there's a couple of images here at different times of the day. So here's in the morning, then it's morning afternoon, and then more, more clock, just showing the different times of the day. Moving on, looking at German's slide. The ramps up to Herman Street from the left side of this image, the undercrossing itself on the right side. Again, taking a look at different times of the day, the morning, at two, and at four o'clock. Now a comparison between the two alternatives. As noted earlier, the team was seeking ways to optimize design. How can we reduce duration? How can we reduce costs? How can we reduce impacts to the community and environment? This optimized design, that they've made good progress, provide an alternative that supports those goals. As you can see, the duration of construction has been reduced, seven years to three years. With that, without having to do a shoe fly, not having to relocate fiber optics, is reduced the risk. Shorter duration projects are less expensive to build. So about a twenty-five percent saving, twenty-eight percent, about a hundred and thirty-five dollar saving as projected there. It has less impact on the environment, less impact on the community, and less impact on railroad operations. So along this journey, we started back in twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one with the project study report. We brought on the designer junior twenty-three with RSC, the floor engineering. We decided that it was in the public interest to take a good hard look at the lessons that we've learned about building an electrified environment. The how matters. We should look at the how very early. So that, we developed this optimized alternative, and then we spent time reviewing with stakeholders, seeing the benefit. So as I mentioned, there was a lesson learned along this journey. We all have experienced the rising cost nationwide of construction, the cost of the volatile labor and material market, the fragile supply chain, and the inefficiencies of building in electrified market. Looking for ways to help we minimize that impact, reduce duration, and build things more quickly with a lower footprint and a lower cost and lower risk. So we took that and applied it to this project. So it's a brief summary. With this new analysis of the design, looking at constructibility and risk, Caltrain endorses this optimized alternative as being more effective. With this new analysis of the design, looking at constructability and risk, Caltrain endorses this optimized alternative as being more effective. By contrast, the original project study report, which had a different technology that is available now with the box jacking. By contrast, the previous one took longer to build, had larger impacts for the environment and rider base. It had a higher cost and higher risk affecting fundability and the safety clearances building next to electrified shoe fly. And just those construction inefficiencies of a mile long, very constrained site with electrified service on one side and Union Pacific tracks on the other side in a very constrained site, 15 feet in the air. With that, actually turn it over, Mr. Ritchie, for the next. But before that, I did like to take a moment to say Caltrain wants to thank the mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council for this opportunity to be a partner and to provide a presentation today for this information. Thank you very much.
To the candidates recommended action, tonight's recommended action is for City Council to receive an update on the grade separation project and provide direction on the optimized alternative work. Staff recommendation is to proceed with optimized alternative due to anticipated cost savings relative to this line as selected preferred alternative and reduce construction impacts and schedule. And temporary of this means that the tracks will remain at grade. Pedestrian and bicycle undercrossing will need to be lowered by several. However, there are cost and schedule savings by eliminating the construction of shoe flies and not having to relocate electrified line. Quickly, the next step after tonight's actions. The project development team will be going before South San Francisco City Council on February 1st for their direction. And then proceeding with preliminary engineering and environmental review. However, before we move on to next steps, I would like to then put you up for questions on the preferred alternative one from the project study report and the optimized alternative that we presented.
Thank you very, thank you both for the presentation and information. Turn it to colleagues if there's questions. Group two, Mr. Alzard.
So in the image that was shared, shows the picture where they're building the thing. So the area that we outlined in our renderings, harvest renderings, they show an area where the sort of swerving bicycle track is going down. That would be the area that would be dug out. And then something would be inserted underneath the tracks.
Yes, that is correct.
Do we anticipate that we wouldn't need any additional space where there would be impacted roads running next to that staging area?
It's a little early for me to say, I don't know. It's a little bit early. We could definitely come back with additional construction impacts and needs when the project's been further developed. Certainly in the preliminary engineering phase, and so it's very early. And so those have not all been determined at this time.
Okay, thank you. And there's a lot of concern. Both the real special ones there, but what we're deciding to do and how it's going to impact. So I appreciate this, this report. As soon as we have more information that we could share, that'd be great. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the rendering. I think it's a great idea and definitely much safer to our pedestrian. Within the seven year timeline, does that mean that the alternate route for the traffic would be going under the overpass for the next seven years or is there going to be an alternative route by not using this Scott Street?
Sure, I'm going to speak to that. So the prior preferred alternative would have required raising the tracks and so the traffic would have been stopped at Scott Street. Under either scenario, there will no longer be regular traffic across Scott Street. They would have to either use San Bruno Avenue or South London Avenue in its completed stage. That was because without having pretty drastic residential impacts to property, allowing regular traffic to cross was not a, and it was also safety as well and anticipated with traffic associated with tickets being down. There'll be much more traffic. And so I think Rock has shown one figure that showed the red lines and the queuing. And with additional train traffic and regular traffic, you could expect that to become untenable at some point, you know, becoming level service hat, which is worse than data hat. And so the seven years is associated correctly with the preferred alternative one that was selected previously back in 2020. And what was done in the interim is to determine how probably possible to reduce some of those costs that we reduce the schedule just because construction impacts. There'll be construction impacts and trying to reduce those on the community and trying to shrink the construction schedule is one way to do that. And so the optimized alternative is anticipating that that could be shortened from seven years to three years.
Thank you. I have a follow up question. So for the mitigation on the storm drain, would the storm drain be routed towards South San Francisco or would it be split between half of, from the underpass going to Scott and then leading to, to South San Francisco?
Sure, that would have to be studied. We would look at, the design team would look at the current drainage patterns and would have to design that in more detail as design progresses.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina. Yes, so just wanted to thank everybody for this report. It's clearly disruptive. It's good to hear that not only this alternative will reduce costs and reduce the disruption. I can't give any negative effects on this change. I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton. Thank you. I was supposed to say thank you for the presentation. I agree that, you know, this alternative doesn't have a lot of negatives for us, but obviously we need to it's almost up to us because South City has agreed to the same, same plan for it as well. Where it's obviously the presentation tonight was focused on what are the impacts of San Bruno and that's what we're, that's what our job is to mitigate. But you can't ignore the fact that, that South City is impacted by it. Is there plans to really have a good detailed visual of what theirs looking like? It's like, it's their, their plan is much more impactful to predict, but do you think that there's going to be more pushback from their side? Is it, is it, is it as clear of a, of a, of a choice for them as it is, as it seems to be for us?
I, that's very, a stood observation, I would agree in San Bruno, there are relatively minor impacts. It's really the same alternative. It's a little bit lower, but the duration and cost, there's many positives associated with it. I believe South San Francisco does have the tougher decision because their tracks initially were raised much higher. And so they do have a decision to make. I guess one difference of that area is primarily industrial. They do have the new development South Line. And so, you know, their concerns, the project team has been in discussions and advising them of what those tracks might be. But there are also positives because now the shoe flies are not required to potentially fire other parcels and potentially be where other buildings might be as well. So there's quite a few positives and then some negatives as well for certain developers. Their, South San Francisco does have their decision to make.
Got it. Okay. So we'll watch their, their paper just on the table. Thank you.
For me, thank you again, both. However, I don't want us to think like this is an easy task. The economics, the way it works, I've spoken this week to transportation authority Caltrain, of course, South San Francisco. And you're talking about, and today's cost is a 50 50, 50. We can maybe get more funding as we have a 4.5 from the transportation authority, but that still means the city has to come up 50% to cities. So I think to your point, Councilmember, I have to, I don't know if it's about the disruption so much in South San Francisco. It's also about the cost. Where does the money come from? That is going to be the big task. And I think that is going to be, also we want to, I think, continue forward because if we can start to go through this process, if we can get to grant our funding mechanisms to where we have about 35%, we can go out for grants. And that gets us more opportunity to do that. If we don't hit that threshold, we don't have those opportunities. Now, how is it going to be coming from Washington for resources? Don't know. But I will tell you that the 130 million is a lot saved. What I can tell you, it's still a lot that is, is necessary and needed. So those are my thoughts and I'm good with the alternative option for myself as well. I don't know that I've heard from any colleague up here that has said, stay with what we have. I think I've heard, unless anybody wants to correct me, then yes, please go with what has been presented and recommended by both staff and Caltrain. Fair? Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And then Robert, I'll see you tomorrow afternoon at the fancy district. All right. For this then, we will go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held in this room at seven o'clock. The special meeting is adjourned.
Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council regular meeting of January the twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Madina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Thank you. For those that are able to rise, it would be a pleasure. I'd like to please apply. Just for those viewing otherwise than here, we staff is aware that there has, the last meeting was audio challenges, difficulties, not staff has been working on that as well as to my colleagues. We just talked directly into the mic. I think that will also aid us. With that, let's move on to item number four, public comments for items not on the agenda this evening.
I have no speaker rights.
Let's move on to number five, announcements and presentations. We have two proclamations. First one is recognizing January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five as Lunar New Year. Read all the whereas's, but whereas the new moon on January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five marks a new year in the lunar calendar and ushers in celebrations for Lunar New Year. This marks the end of the year of the dragon and the beginning of the year of the snake associated with transformation, wisdom, and growth. And whereas Lunar New Year is the biggest holiday of the year in Asian communities and celebrations span the globe. Its importance is rooted deep in history and today remains the most important occasion for generations of family to reunite and spend time together. And now therefore I rego Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year to all who celebrate and wish you happiness, health, prosperity in the year of the snake. Next proclamation. Item B, and this was, this is for Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements of African Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of the African American U.S. history. And where this year's theme is African Americans and Labor. Whereas in two nineteen, the city of San Bruno brought forward two cities in the county of San Mateo, the United Against Hate Campaign, which encourages cities and residents to work together against hate, thereby restoring respect and civil discourse and reverence, embracing the strength of diversity and building inclusive and equity communities for all. And whereas Black History Month is also an occasion to celebrate the countless contributions of African Americans, many of whom lived through and smelt very segregation, racial prejudice and discrimination to enrich every fiber in America's life. And now therefore I rego Medina, being resolved that with the city of San Bruno proclaim February's Black History Month and encourage all residents and visitors alike to join us in celebrating this special month. Next, we'll move on to item D. This is going to be a receiving oral presentation from One Shoreline. Work, and I think we're gonna start with. Oh, did I skip you? You know, Aaron, it was nothing personal. Let me go back, folks. I'm rushing. Item C, receive hip housing twenty twenty five calendar presentation from our presenter, Aaron Akin, who is also our past community development director. So we always enjoy seeing you and I apologize for skipping.
Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor of City Council, Aaron Akin. It's always good to be back in front of the city council. But tonight I'm here as a bound hip housing board member. Since nineteen seventy two, hip housing has been helping low-income San Mateo County residents find and maintain affordable housing. And we're listed in all twenty-one housing elements in San Mateo County, including the city of San Bruno, as a trusted and affordable housing partner. Last year, we worked with over thirty-nine hundred individuals, provided housing to over twelve hundred low-income households throughout the county. In San Bruno, during the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, we served nearly one hundred and seventy residents through our properties and programs, including sixty-six individuals who applied for our home sharing program, two families enrolled in our self-sufficiency program, and nineteen individuals of our new housing readiness program. On behalf of hip housing, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for their continued support of our organization. As a symbol of appreciation of our partnership, I'm here tonight to present you with a hip housing twenty twenty five calendar. Each year, hip housing asks children from around the county to raise kindergarten to draw up a picture of a home and tell us what it means to them. This year, we had over five hundred calendar entries, and from these entries, we selected thirteen, one for each month and one for the, one for the cover. All of the quotes are great in here. All of the images are, all the drawings are great. I'll choose one from the youngest winner, from San Mateo. His name is Coley. He said, "This is the month of February. Home is fun. Home is where I sleep. Home is with mommy and daddy. I love home." So there's, I, we have calendars here for the council and extras for staff. We hope that you enjoy the calendar as it serves as a beautiful reminder throughout the year of how important it is to everyone in our county, especially our children. More information about hip housing's programs or calendar contests, calendar contests can be found on our website, hiphousing.org. Council may also know that hip housing has a new home. The organization is moving into the heart of downtown San Mateo, but on Fifth Avenue. So if you're, if you're down there, feel free to stop by. We'll be in early next year going through renovations now. So thank you, and I did present you with the calendars.
And thank you, Aaron. Looking at this later, this sort of council meeting when you work here that you ever had to stay?
That is true.
Oh, that's true.
Compared to many cities, you do have efficient council meetings. There is that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here and thank you for the calendars. Now we will move on to item D, receiving update on One Shoreline work. Director Lee.
Good evening, Mayor of the City Council. Before we start with the presentation, I just wanted to kind of provide a little context. Presentation tonight, I don't want to take too much of a one mannered thunder from One Shoreline, but we're essentially asking to come back to the council to kind of talk about the progress of work that they've been doing with the city. The last time that was here was in, I believe, January twenty twenty-three, your last one. And so One Shoreline is our partner trying to address flooding in the line of cases. So I think, like, so.
Dean, good to see you too. Thank you for having me today. Wanted to also mention that the staff here, your own Aprils, your board of research manager, somebody which I, surely. And. So, so the board area. So, my plans covered today, pretty, like, spring agenda, introduction to Shoreline, flooding issues in San Bruno. Talk about the short-term, long-term actions. Um, we reached the presence of elder community and key agencies. The channel thing is here, San Bruno. CK, I think it's CK, making a presentation out of the, talking about their project is fine reference. So I'll start off with a little bit about One Shoreline, start viewing, carry a little bit about it. Me, prior to One Shoreline's creation, there had been a longstanding flood control district, and that was part of the county of San Mateo. And it was created in nineteen fifty-nine. There were more specific areas in the county that included the flood control district. Only about ten percent of the county area, about ten percent of the basin line. Meanwhile, starting in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, entities started looking at climate risks facing California communities. And studies in here include a study by county of San Mateo, Caltrans, study by Stanford, a study by the Scripps Institute down in San Diego, study by MTC, ABAG, most recently, and, and the Daily Journal about the unique vulnerability we have to sea level rise. We have a common vulnerability to all the other climate, water, committed issues and fire. There's the area of sea level rise, we have a vulnerability at stake. So there was a general recognition that climate change is a transformative challenge. And, and congratulations to whoever wants to say. Straight to water, here just now, and feel the energy in that room. And so recognition that climate change is transformative challenge and that it takes all of us together working on it. So there was state legislation passed and signed by the governor in twenty nineteen, created on Shoreline. First agency in California, government agency in California to work on climate change. And we do all things related to water, from too much water to even too little water. We're spot. Priorities, my priorities. So planning, land use planning, the public infrastructure plan and private development plan. We were adopted a planning policy guidance twenty twenty-three around future conditions. So that what we approved today is resilient to conditions tomorrow. In regards to sea level rise, extreme storms, groundwater rise, and, and storm level. Most, now we can call it infrastructure guidance, and that will help to form the C's work on the storm grid system, as well as all the C's in our county, work on their storm grid systems, roads, utilities, parks and marinas, all kinds of public infrastructure that bigger communities, who they are. Secondly, in terms of priorities of One Shoreline, when we were created, we were, it was intended that we focused on long-term alignment of resilience projects rather than the land use planning, but we were so eight projects that were not resilient to future conditions, that that became a new emphasis. We still do the work on advancing line resilience projects. I'll talk about the one that was at San Bruno in a minute. And then the other area that weren't, it was anticipated in twenty nineteen that we would be focused on right away with the extreme storms. We saw it was for rivers twenty twenty-one, including October twenty twenty-one caused water flooding here in the state, as well as, of course, the New Year's Eve twenty twenty-two, begins in January twenty twenty-three, and that became an important focus where we do the emergency work during winters. I mean, before I heard of you more, I'll talk about that too in a second. And then finally, securing funding. Initially, you may recall that One Shoreline received a commitment from all twenty cities in the county, and that was matched by San Mateo County. This was a commitment made in twenty nineteen to fund the first three years of operations. Well, through additional funding that we've secured and efficiencies, we've stretched that three years of funding to nine years of funding. And stats that need us is that we're funded for several more years, but we still haven't turned state sources of money. And San Mateo County, remember last year, once ago, made another three-year commitment, and soon we'll be sending letters to cities with a similar request to match what was done in twenty nineteen as we consider long-term measures to fund our operations and projects long-term. Flooding is not just San Bruno. My team size of a lot of other communities dealing with this issue. Here are images from San, city of San Mateo. These two images are from the city of San Carlos. One at the top shows a pump station opposite a brand-new development, just put in, completed in twenty twenty-four. And you can see that the sighting of the development right among Creek, opposite this pump station is problematic today. This is during a high tide, not a rate event, and it would certainly be more problematic as the tides increase and during a storm. And so this is kind of a, we're trying to avoid where we have private development and probably the structure at cost purposes right next to each other in terms of climate resilience. Additionally, here at the city, this is on a sunny day, and, and this is in the area near Seaport Boulevard that's subject to flooding during high tides. And then finally, our friends coast, pictures from Happy Bay, terms of the fluvial, storm-driven flooding, and also you see erosion, highway alignment, way down to Circus Beach area, you, in the last few years. In San Bruno and in various, our third flood zones, then back to the former flood control district. These flood zones were created in the nineteen sixties generally, and they collect property taxes from residents of the five cities that make up the Coleman Creek flood zone, a claim portion of San Bruno. You see there the area of green that's within that black dashed line. That's San Bruno, a rest. It's the pain to the Coleman Creek flood zone. Other San Bruno rest, most of the city pay into the blue area, which is San Bruno Creek floods. San Bruno Creek flood zone brings in about four hundred fifty thousand dollars here, and we have about four hundred eighty dollars to pay towards these numbers. There, if you're wondering what your property tax bill looks like, when it's, or where you pay into it, but it's on property tax bill, doesn't actually identify the flood zone. It says countywide tax for the sea secure. That's the line item that includes funding for the San Bruno pre-lets, if you're interested in that. So this is what the flood plain looks like for the area of San Bruno. Most of the flooding in the city is in Bel Air neighborhood. There are small pockets outside of Bel Air neighborhood that are the FEMA flood zone. As you can see from these arrows, there are five different arrows coming out at the water. And, and they come from five, the flooding in San Bruno comes from five different sources. That includes the north of the city, Naperville, Slough, there, Francisco, water coming up the channel of San Bruno Creek. You see the arrow there, a backflow of that water from San Francisco Airport, water from the San Bruno Creek itself coming down to Stevens Road, and, and water from the south. So it doesn't mean that when there's flooding in the Bel Air neighborhood, bad water is coming from all these places. What it means is that the models tell us that this is where water would come from. And that's important because this is what FEMA uses to determine what its flood plain looks like. And so to address the flooding issue in San Bruno, we have to think about what's the real flooding concern, what's the model flooding concern? And we have to tackle both of those if you want to get people out of FEMA flood plain and the flood insurance requirement. We're focused right now on both. I would say the short-term projects really focus on the flooding today, and we have a resilience project to look at flooding sources future. It's a very complex area, not just technically, as I was just talking about, but also jurisdictionally. The Bel Air neighborhood is located within San Bruno, adjacent to incorporated county lands that are owned and operated and managed by San Francisco International Airport. Of course, there are two highways there, and Caltrans has land rights associated with those highways, and there are two PG&E substations. One Shoreline owns, infrastructure is labeled in green, and that includes the two pump stations and the tide gate. That's what we inherited from this county flood control district. Pump station dates nineteen sixty-eight, tide gate dates nineteen forty-eight. So you can see that we have very old infrastructure that we're trying to both maintain and plan to upgrade for future climate conditions at the same time. That's our challenge, and that's what we're working with the city. San Bruno, this is the South San Francisco, airport, Samtrans, and getting all of that, the Caltrans, other entities that are impacting this career. So this shows our infrastructure. See that image of the tide gate being repaired in twenty twenty-two in the top. And mentally, you see the pump station that wall runs the street, and repaired for, three and four. And mentally, you see the pump station that wall runs the street and uh repaired uh for three and four. We have the four pumps there, and then at the bottom, you see pictures of the board after, before on the left, after on the right. A pan clearing that's done uh with San Francisco International Airport in the creek channel there. Um so we do maintain the infrastructure when it's urgently needed, um but maintenance is reactive. And what we're trying to do is be proactive and think about replacing this infrastructure for future conditions. Okay, uh the San Bruno Creek flood zone uh has historically uh been used um for. This type of infrastructure, there's an inch of of that wall, pump station at the outside. What you'll notice in this picture, which is interesting, is you see the water at the bottom that's San Bruno Creek. And this is a picture looking towards the west of the pump station, and those two things that are in the water actually outfalls from the pump station. So clearly, this is during a high tide, and it would have a very hard time exending the water from the pump station during these high tides. And so that's why the importance of the tide gate project, the repair project I just mentioned. Keep water out of the area of the pump station as much as possible um during the high tides. But again, given the age of the infrastructure and the fact that it was designed for historic fifty-year events. Not future atmospheric rivers to larger and more frequent, um looking to replace this infrastructure. So we have a regional project. Um this project will include our infrastructure. And also include uh potential uh the potential use of other areas in infrastructure. Two of those areas are shown in white green uh in little circles. The one closest to three eighty is Caltrans land. And that serves right now as a farm flood basin, but it's not affected as one base. It actually is, maybe contributes to the flooding on the secondary. The the area of the larger areas, green at the bottom, is Bel Air Elementary School, and that has the potential. Um that has been studied uh at a very high level to look at creating a flood basin near the Caltrain tracks. And see if that's an opportunity. So our regional project could look at both of those flood bases. As well as our infrastructure that we're already evaluating condition of, um as well as uh. Uh tie into the storm drain system of the city, uh and I'll talk about that. So what this project will do, we have a nine hundred thousand dollar. And uh we're going to analyze the alternatives for this regional project. And we're going to develop a thirty percent design project and do outreach and come up with a CEQA compliant jobs, uh project description. Um the timeline for this regional project is uh is starting now. In terms of convening a multi-agency technical advisory committee, this is an approach of some of the outreach activities that included. Uh votes from from all different agencies. And uh in the summer, issue an RFP to hire a consulting team. And over the next two years, basically going through the conception of designs, project alternatives. The idea of having a final design that uh we can get uh completed E I R, get permitted uh and start construction. Now, this is just on the big regional project. There's still a smaller hopes called local improvement that we can do. As smaller projects to address the issue now, some of which are already underway. Uh I'll talk about our flood early warning system and our community engagement, uh web portal for a second. We have a flood early warning system that's county-wide. Uh all those green dots show locations of various stream or precipitation or tide gate. Here's throughout the county, and that informs, we call our dashboards for each creek. This is the dashboard for San Bruno Creek. Um on a day uh that had no rain and just five gauge, odd and the strengths and activity. Um doesn't show for the the creek depth or the precipitation in our area. Um but that's not always the case. This is what the graph looked like on New Year's Eve or the course of twenty-four hours, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. We had flooding, and this predicts it by having a gauge upstream in San Bruno Creek. And can alert One Shoreline, can alert city staff, can alert residents directly if they choose. Uh to uh flooding that's anticipated from downstream in short order. Doesn't give that much warning. Um most people are watching the weather and have a sense of what's going on during these big storms. Um but it does give a bit of warning to people to move their cars or take some really urgent pressures regarding their property or themselves. We also have a uh a client partner that allows us to receive and give feedback. Exchange information with citizens. Um it's called IC Change. People can download the app. Those people have San Bruno. Uh here's a, here's a post from a resident on San, oh sorry, on Seventh Street, Bel Air Neighborhood on the bottom left. And you know, post um One Shoreline actually regarding the tide gate project. So this is a way for uh people to report on their scheme. This helps us and the city understand what's going on in real time. It also helps to inform the design of our projects. We're not just deciding it based on these models or big, we're deciding it based on actual lived experience of where what is going during these storms. This program called the Community Rating System of the National Flood Insurance Program. Um the city participates in the NFIP, and of course, it has properties in the NFIP. That are required to purchase flood insurance if they have federally backed mortgage. The C R S program, or Community Rating System program, can reduce flood insurance premium for communities. Um that have certain best management practices regarding flood management and communicate with their communities. The city does vote, and so we've been uh working, we hired a consultant to work with all cities in the county and the county itself. To uh to allow this consultant at no cost, city, to talk about what are the opportunities for the community rating system. To join that program. Um our consulting is on June twenty twenty-five. And we've had several conversations with Matt, others about this opportunity, and the city is exploring it uh at this. Outreach. So a big part of this whole effort regards outreach. And um the outreach that we're doing here in San Bruno is different than the outreach that we're doing anywhere else in the county. It's very intensive door-to-door. We have a consultant, a scientist, um that supports us. That is uh an expert on climate reef and uh and they have worked with Climate Resilient Communities, which is a San Mateo-based nonprofit. And uh Rise South City, which is also a San Mateo-based, uh San Mateo county-based um C D O. And uh and we developed this program um with uh leadership of two council members that show up to these meetings. Thank you very much to Martin Deane and Tom Howarth for doing so. Um developed this program called Resilience San Bruno. And these meetings happen periodically to talk to residents about what's going on. Hear from them about what their concerns are currently and down the road, uh both so that uh we can inform our short-term efforts. But also improve resilience efforts. That's what we get out of it. They get out of it hopefully is understanding uh who's responsible for what, who they can pull. Circumstances and actually have an agency, an agency that's available. Uh the picture of the water shows some of the city participation, and thanks Dennis Walsh for being, for participating in one of his workshops. Uh when you're talking about these experiences, so and programs. Precincts are doing to protect themselves, I think it's really important, and we're certainly encouraging it. Uh the home precincts that are taking it upon themselves uh to lay sandbags. Uh to, they share information both through the official networks and of course, just neighborhood and as as neighbors. Um they're moving vehicles and they're wanting safer ground, and that's really important. Um and I think that's something that we and the city have to work together to uh kind of coordinate that a bit. Um and because people are doing it on their own ready, and uh and that's a good thing. A lot of what we heard from other things was concerned that was based on their experience of uh car damages to their vehicles during during flood events. Uh the other things that are being done are private, private citizens in their homes, installing some homes, and uh and then work. Resilience San Bruno program. We also have key agencies. So the key agencies uh include One Shoreline, the city, Climate Resilient Communities, that's a C R C is. Prime Resilient Communities, K S C CAG, and I know you'll hear from C CAG every uh in a few minutes. Um the German Spanish projects includes uh the Resilience San Bruno program. One Shoreline will continue to be a partner in that. And C R C is the private C D O partner to C CAG that's also facilitating that program. The one more, one more ship project, if you're aware of that in a couple minutes. Um Regional Infrastructure Project, that's the project I spoke about, that we're on. And right now, we're gathering information on hydrology, storm drain systems of both cities, since San Bruno and Cell City. And we're doing the condition assessment of our structure. So that's the Regional Infrastructure Project, um that we're gonna get going on. You know, create this line way later this year. Um storm drain capacity improvements, uh that's that's a city portal. And uh and that's super important because if you just do the Regional Infrastructure Project without the improvements to storm drain system, you haven't solved the problem. And vice versa. You have to do both storm drain system improvements and the work of regional infrastructure uh in order to actually reduce flooding. Area, San Bruno. And then finding stormwater retention projects. I mentioned uh the three, uh two eighty-three eighty. At Bel Air, Metro, and at the Caltrans site, uh those are some options they're exploring. Um potential investments and participation by the city, uh the city storm drain plant. Uh C's right now looking at uh repairs needed for that storm drain system. And I know you've got Measure Q, which is fabulous. Um congratulations to the community and to you all for for your leadership to uh to push that forward. Um and we just, we want to move forward beyond with that funding. It's really important that the city is a partner. Not just do a storm drain plant, but actually take them at that's. And that's the step that that is the hardest step, and uh and we want to give. Uh for staying community engagement, as the city does, um continuing to do that. Uh participating in our region project through uh our technical advisory committee, that's with my staffing, uh through funding with Measure Q. Our four million dollars is not going to solve this problem. It's partnership between us and other external funding opportunities. Propped forward, just past state-level climate bond. It's a great project for climate. And we should be, we are and will be uh looking in the future, looking at that, at the source of funding. And then land use. Are there opportunities for land to be used in in a different ways to reduce wave? Uh increase recreation, increase habitat values uh in this area, and we think that they're. Thank you, and uh if I have any questions.
Thank you very much uh for being here and thank you for the report.
If I can also just highlight.
Absolutely.
You all have uh. We have copies for you, and we'll leave them with you. Uh this is a report done by One Shoreline, Rise South City, Stanford. Uh that collaborating on the outreach program, and I encourage you to get it there. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh questions or comments for colleagues, Councilmember Hannity. So just a, just a quick comment. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Summer, and and your whole team at One Shoreline. We we really appreciate the 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 help in San Bruno. We not not only appreciate the past and future help and partnership. With our infrastructure projects that are so important for safety and resilience here in San Bruno. But also the fo- the focus on community outreach, that's really important to help make sure that our most vulnerable residents have access to information. You know, keep them, that can keep them safe, keep their property safe uh during climate-related emergencies. And to, and also we encourage all residents to participate in part of the solutions. We really appreciate the partnership and look forward to it. Continue uh continue working with you. Thank you.
Yes, Lynn, thank you so much, and and to the whole team that you brought to San Bruno, these resources of. The opportunity for our community to talk to somebody in the length of time that you 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 and C R C spends. It's, I believe there's been a. We're in eight different community meetings once planned. And the turn on at the last meeting, and that was yesterday, was amazing, and it's, I think it's building the trust and and. Letting our community know, et cetera, for, you know, what to do when it floods. And um so I really wanted to make sure that you were aware, I think everyone that goes to these meetings appreciate that. I wanted to uh thank you for your uh information on the regional infrastructure project. I think it would be amazing if we had things similar to what Orange Park has in South San Francisco. Where they take the stormwater and and put it underneath a basement field. And right there on the ground, it shows. Hopefully, one of the things that that will be examined. Um I understand it takes many, many years. But my overall. Gratitude, I'm concerned about, you know, to be a better partner with One Shoreline. Will require additional staffing, and I know our staff are already busy doing many different things. And as we're going into budget, I hope that uh we have communication with with our director and city manager. Making sure that we can take advantage of the resources that are being spent here now. Because this is something that didn't happen in the community before, and the potential there is really enormous. So I just wanted to make sure as we're going into budget that we realize to do more work, help, and you. So, thank you very much.
What's the topic, Alvarez?
Mr. May, I'd like to lend for the presentation. Um when you were here last uh twenty twenty three presentation, I recall and asking the timeline of the project. And I I really appreciate for um keeping that timeline uh based on your report this year. And you mentioned that we received, or you received the nine hundred thousand um. Uh funding. Uh is that amount just for the design, uh for the specific San Bruno design? Or does it entail the whole project? Uh when it comes to designing, um partnering with uh One Shoreline, um I'm hoping to um. Have our staff coordinate because we have, you mentioned our Measure Q, um and that's something that we could also incorporate. Because we are um in the middle of the our budgeting, and if we can incorporate that, uh part of that now. Uh for the deciding, when considering the the design for the San Bruno uh chestnut. What's the op system?
Yeah, so uh uh the grant is a FEMA grant, right? And the nine hundred thousand, and it requires a minimum of six hundred thousand dollar badge. We have a San Bruno pre-float, so it's can be used for that. Obviously, Measure Q, it's also a source. And a potential manage funding. Um the commitment to receive the FEMA money is to develop a thirty percent, right? Which is kind of a conceptual design, which is fully detailed, that's, that's beyond just figures on stage and sexual engineering design. Um and it's enough to then start to develop uh the project description of what that looks like, your secret document. But not complete secret document. And uh and we're also funded to do outreach. And we're funded to to apply for more money for FEMA actually pays you to to submit to develop new applications for funding. Because they want to see their initial investments lead to actual structure. So those are the things that we do with the grants, and it is the regional project, and what I mean by that, there's really two. Might be confusing when I turn regional. Um the term that uh Councilmember Medina was referring to, regional project. Was the stormwater retention-based regional project, and that's so much for Orange National Park in South San Francisco. We also funded a project uh in Quikrains Park Development, it's like that, where it takes water, floodwater out of the channel. Stores it underground, filters it, and then at the right time, it's a back-up channel when it's safe to do so, not drink. So that's the potential-based project. I think the project, city has uh with Caltrans, others, and and C CAG. At three eighty and two eighty intersection near there, that's a great project. They're all sorts to do that close to Bel Air, like in Bel Air. And at Caltrans. There's also the regional project, meaning all those different pieces that I showed on the map there, including our two pump stations, our tide gate. Um what what is the role of land use in that area? Uh what's the role of the storm drain system for the city? And that's a different regional project. That's the so, that's where we get the FEMA money, the nine hundred thousand. And on that project, um very much the city needs to be in right current, as I said, there aren't. That so-called region project doesn't work without a storm drain improvement, um that's resilient to future conditions. Because if you don't do the storm drain improvements, no, we do, it's gonna come back in, and it's gonna back up. It's a rain system, still comes streets, and that's what we're trying. So I think um I think there's a role for Measure Q, and what you would, we would be grateful for. Is to have a a serious discussion of what's the highest best use of the San Bruno Creek flood supply. That's the money that belongs to the people. So their property taxes over over decades, that's built up. Some of it's been spent on these pump stations to maintain them, but that's money that belongs to the people, just as Measure Q does. So we should all be at the table talking about what is the highest best use for our one station. What is this similar with Measure Q? How do we take advantage of both of those things? And how do we use those things to leverage grants from state now that they've passed? And how do we use those things to leverage grants from state now that they've passed a ten billion dollar climate bond? So I think that's a very important conversation that we would welcome the city over the next few months and years, as you think about. How what to do with Measure Q.
Thank you. Again, we want to thank you very much for your time, being here, appreciate it, have a good rest of your evening.
Okay.
City clerk, under any public comments?
I have no speaker cards, but there may be potentially someone in the audience.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted me to speak on this presentation?
Yeah, I was just informed that there's just.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's move on to item you receive presentation from One Watershed.
Uh the community mayor, I think the mayor's council. Um uh you just recently, before this presentation, you were at One Shoreline and now you're at the One Watershed, maybe it's the hours later soon. It just sounds like one or whatever, and everyone gets really confused. And so um what what we're really trying to do is kind of highlight a stormwater and flooding challenges that we have in our in our city. Where One Shoreline focuses on, uh let's just say, east side of town, based on geography along the shoreline, because flooding. One Watershed is actually a project that's run by C T A, and we'll have Mr. Gordon come up and do his recent research, so I don't want to take his thunder away. Like, it focuses on the watershed in terms of how the water is collected and and transmitted down to the bay. I think historically, uh developed cities have tried to transfer rainwater, groundwater runoff as quickly as possible to the bay. I think over time, those communities have realized that sometimes that's not the best thing, if there's high rain densities. So we have projects that come along, try to maybe infiltrate the water back into into the ground. And there's, that's been kind of a dynamic change in the industry over the past decades. And so I'm going to have uh Mr. Bograv from C T A come up and kind of talk about the One Watershed project and how that applies in the grand scheme of bars and water engines.
We, we got it. Mayor Medina and councilmembers, thanks for having me tonight. Uh so I would like to present on the draft One Watershed Framework Report and give a summary of the One Watershed Framework Project. And as uh Director Lee mentioned, it builds off a lot of what was shared in the One Shoreline presentation, but it's a little bit different. Uh a lot of, a lot of overlap. So I just wanted to start out with some basic kind of background on stormwater management and where we are coming at this uh from C T A's stormwater program uh perspective. And from the local uh city perspective as well, so uh what is the big deal with stormwater? I think, you know, many uh set experiences, experience at firsthand in your communities. Uh but essentially, the the process of urbanization has led to many precarious surfaces. Uh the county wide stormwater program addresses this issue primarily from a water quality standpoint, uh rather than a flooding standpoint, which is more uh One Shoreline's focus. But we are addressing uh both now, uh certainly. Services, there is uh a bushing, essentially running off into the bay, uh creeks and then a bushing. And uh the um process that Pat mentioned, they'll, you know, essentially getting the water off landscape as quickly as possible. And with a separated uh sewer system, storm sewer system, all that water is going to our receiving waters country. That's the water quality issue, impacts to water quality and quality. And a couple of schematics, so pre-urban development condition would have a significant movement of water throughout the landscape. Uh infiltrating into groundwater systems, flowing uh subsurface back into creeks, evaporate transpir- transpiring into the air through vegetation. Uh and with the development, you have a whole change of the uh environment landscape with a series of underground pipes. Which channel stormwater and runoff uh from these hard surfaces, buildings, sidewalks, roadways, harden up and so on. Into the storm drain infrastructure and then out to our creeks and. And uh many of the water quality concerns are driven by a a state ended stormwater permit, which has uh. Regulations related to health and safety impacts that are connected to subsistence fishing in the bay. So that's actually one of the main drivers for uh making some water quality improvements. We also know there are other issues, if you take a look at the uh storm drain system or the roadways on a quette, you see uh plain pollution moving throughout the uh drainage system, which is. Cause of these impacts as well. I've lost the word here, sorry. And that's like, it's also a significant impact. And uh even where you have drainage systems moving water um during wet weather and situations where you get a large storm. Uh since I mentioned, uh the system can be kind of overwhelmed and we have spearheaded this. Trash is another water quality impact that our program focuses on and it's uh seeing creeks go up with all kinds of tree during wet weather as well. And we know that climate change will make all these issues worse. Uh C T A has led some modeling efforts to look at downscaled climate change impacts for future precipitation. And essentially, the maps are showing uh increased stormwater runoff depth over a series of different design storms or return storm frequencies. Uh and we're seeing very dark blue areas that could be upwards of three inches or more increased stormwater runoff depth for a very rich storm. Which would uh certainly um put a lot of stress on the drainage system. And so the the solution that we point to is what we call green stormwater infrastructure. And to also show a few pictures of what we're talking about, but the idea is to uh use natural systems to capture, treat and infiltrate stormwater. Um it's restoring the the natural stormwater uh essentially the natural hydrologic cycle. And we can do this through distributed small scale projects or larger construction projects, which are part of our original stormwater capture section. And uh the idea is to uh address multiple benefits beyond water quality. And with these projects, we can uh we can achieve goals with resilience, adapting to climate change impacts, flooding. Um groundwater recharge, which is actually relevant for San Bruno, which has part of its water supply, groundwater uh system. And it could include public and private projects, as we'll see pictures. And uh the idea is to integrate gray infrastructures and traditional storm drain infrastructure with green infrastructure. And uh and to echo comments made previously, it really will take both, I think, to have a sustainable uh well managed system. And the city of San Bruno adopted its green infrastructure plan, which C T A helped have all the cities in the county develop plans back in twenty nineteen. So a more balanced approach, we look something like this, where you have trees and uh green infrastructure scattered throughout the landscape and more water being into the ground. Or evaporate transpiration through vegetation. We won't get back to a pre-urban condition, but we want to do that, but this is a more balanced approach. So here are a few pictures in San Bruno, this is um just outside nearby um building here, so a great local project. Um and congratulations, by the way, on this entire building and surrounding kids here, it's beautiful. This is here, and this is what we're talking about, so you can imagine, probably seeing the precondition, um uh you know, hard to channel moving water. Uh versus a green vegetated spill, which is going to allow water to infiltrate and creates a nice new amenity facility as well. Clears a nicer stored uh channel for water to flow through, and that's, that's the goal. Is an example of it, we call it a fire retention feature, where you have a curb, but the curb is cut and allowing the stormwater to flow in and to treat and it's a storm. Here's a roadway condition where you have uh fire retention and green infrastructure behind the curb. And again, capturing runoff from a fairly large drainage area off the street. And then there's um planters, we fill the trees and vegetation and vegetable soil to to manage. And I did want to mention the Orange Royal Park storm art project uh that Lynn Lynn mentioned. And this is really the first and it's timed in the region, uh it's completed a couple of years ago in twenty twenty two, in South San Francisco. Uh Caltrans funded the project, buying and construction, but it really took the city and partners, um uh including the parks department to uh make this successful. And uh you know, there are seven different agencies within the watershed, so it was a very collaborative process. Uh and this is the type of projects that we'd like to see forward. Um it's certainly something that C T A is helping to uh advance funding for, including the project at I two eighty three eighty in San Bruno. So uh to get to the One Watershed Framework and what we're talking about tonight. Uh I'll share a few slides on the framework strategy and uh the phase of the project that we're working on now. There is a draft report that's available on C T A's website and all input uh for councilmembers and staff. Uh as you are eager to review the the document, it's really an equity focused approach to integrated watershed management. So that's uh that's the concept. It is uh akin to a one water effort, including uh different water uh utility types, which I'll get into. Um this is a an effort that's led by C T A, but in partnership with others, including One Shoreline, City of San Bruno, uh climate design communities and others we've mentioned. And it's a grant funded project, which is important, we have about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state to transfer. But the whole idea is to work at a watershed scale versus just an individual agency standpoint, so that's really important. And uh we are evaluating the climate impacts for multiple climate hazards to water infrastructure at watershed scales. These are the climate hazards, uh sea level rise, wind groundwater rise impacts, extreme precipitation, extreme heat, drought and wildfire. And all of those hazards are being uh evaluated for or uh with respect to exposure to our water infrastructure. And here we're talking about not just stormwater, uh but water supply, storm drainage systems, wastewater services and ground delivery systems. So it's a holistic approach to watershed management. And uh potential projects, so there could be a lot under the sun here, but we we are taking a focus on green stormwater infrastructure as sort of uh our uh focus on managing stormwater more sustainably. Um that could include other things, uh or range of projects, I should say, from sustainable street projects, uh similar to the picture you saw, to regional stormwater capture projects. Uh school and park retrofit, so there's quite a lot of potential to retrofit those areas and create them uh. Create more resilient and green infrastructure. Uh but it it could also include gray infrastructure improvements, so um height improvements, colder replacements, uh pump station improvements. Shoreline resilience projects, if you're working closely on shoreline, um diversions to treatment plants or on the wastewater side of things. It could be a storage project, stormwater capture and divert to a wastewater treatment plant. And there you could have water quality improvement, uh you could also have a potential supply for the cycle call. Creek restoration could be another project type that gets involved here. And the goals are to support um compliance with the the regional stormwater permit and green infrastructure uh implementation requirements. There are also local planning uh benefits here, so as the city adopts uh its new climate action plan. Um the we would want to have alignment with what's involved in the uh risk assessment, and I'll talk about in a minute. And opportunities that are maybe identified through the climate action plan could be referenced in the One Watershed planning process we're advancing. And so there's a mutual benefit there to those. Uh and so it's a, as I mentioned, a holistic approach, um and we are taking a a focus on uh different water utilities, not just one infrastructure type of water supply, drainage systems, wastewater systems. Uh and we we're doing that because we know that the systems are integrated already, they're geographically connected uh in proximity to one another. And they're, so they're, you know, have mutual uh exposure hazards to climate change. Uh there's also opportunities to leverage these different infrastructure types to provide more benefits. So you could have um, you know, an opportunity to enhance overall system resilience. Uh but you could also use stormwater capture to potentially reduce the need to upsize local pipes. I mean, not in the long term, but in the near term, you could reduce some of the strain on the existing infrastructure. Um you could potentially reduce the effects of influence infiltration on wastewater treatment uh collection system. Uh which could be linked to stormwater management as well and opportunities to recharge ground. It's kind of the idea. Um there are also compounded effects of climate change, so the sea level rise plus storm surge is a very uh dangerous situation often, so that's a little benefit that. Get from working from an integrated perspective. And uh forming partnerships and funding is another key focus of this work as well. And uh as I mentioned, including communities in the planning process is a priority and want to have uh local residents directly. Been successful with, and this is a clap approach, so uh we'll continue to work with our local agencies, One Shoreline, our community based organizations, they've worked done. Here's a a list of the project purchases, One Watershed project, uh C T A is the grant lead, as I mentioned, private client communities, it's the CEO lead. City of San Bruno is San Bruno Creek Watershed Lead. We have the County of San Mateo, Sustainability Department, South San Francisco, San Bruno Regional Park Hall Control Department. The Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency, uh San Mateo County Flood, it's a little resident district of One Shoreline. So these are our partners who are completely committed to this vision and we anticipate many years working together with this. Uh here are the primary tasks, going to all the details, but we have an engagement plan. Uh task two is developing the One Watershed data inventory of the climate hazard data and infrastructure set and information. Uh three is the One Watershed Framework Report, which is in a draft form, we have an online dashboard available. Then we're going to switch over to task four, which is uh the community led San Bruno Creek One Watershed Climate Resilience Plan, which is essentially a pilot study. Of the One Watershed Framework locally within San Bruno Creek Watershed. And we did apply for a NOAA grant with the uh the state grant that we have for sixty million dollars um last winter and we were unsuccessful, unfortunately with that. That was a a large competition at the national uh scale, but we have since applied for twenty million dollars from the EPA. Uh we'll see what happens with the the federal grants um now, but uh we do have twenty million dollars pending with one uh project. That would uh would be the pump station retrofit at seven of the walls, that's part of the current application. And so here are the phases of the project, um we have a few advisory committees that are helping steer this effort. A group of technical advisory committee members, lots of public agency representatives from uh local agencies and water management. Um organizations, we have a decade priority community work group, which is mostly nonprofits and it's led by our. Climate exempted communities, and we have uh the Resilient San Bruno Climate Change Community Team uh as part of this effort, which is really exciting. And we'll have some public workshops, uh but more locally here in San Bruno, this is for the pilot study development this year. I wanted to highlight that the Resilient San Bruno Climate Change Community Team is a really important part of this project. And again, uh thank you for the councilmembers who are participating in this effort. Uh the, I want to state that the the grant uh that we're running here is helping pay for residents to attend, which is really fantastic. Uh it's also paying for stipends for the I C R B program. Um and uh members that are attending there for nonprofits and so on. And uh yeah, this has been stated, this is, this has been a tremendous um result already. And I think just establishing a grassroots organizational effort that has supported things like Measure Q is uh really what this is all about. And it's putting resources into um this type of work and building capacity to to uh to make success happen. Uh so there were some additional workshops that One Shoreline led back in October, which uh our grant also helped fund, so a lot of collaboration there. Uh there's a community project that will come out of this, and there's like fifteen thousand dollars to do some of the local things in San Bruno. And uh the team is also providing input on the One Watershed project as it gets developed. So a lot of really fantastic coordination and collaboration there. Uh the draft report is out, uh it's it's going through review now, it will be finalized uh coming this February. Uh but essentially, it is a technical report, it's not a a community plan necessarily, it's really an analysis. Uh documents the context, the background of climate hazards on watershed perspective that we're we're talking about. It summarizes the climate hazard exposure assessment at county wide scale, shows pictures of that. And it defines defines the process for developing the uh pilot studies in the watershed. So here's a a snapshot of the framework itself, it's a kind of multi-step process. And uh the whole idea here is it's actually modeling the California Office of Emergency Services Adaptation Planning Process. And so uh step one is identifying your your agencies and stakeholders, partners involved. Step two is doing uh an assessment of the vulnerability of infrastructure and assets to climate hazards. That's really a multi-step process, uh I'll show some more detailed images of the outputs from that. But uh importantly, part of the vulnerability assessment piece is getting community. That's where the Resilient San Bruno team will come into play, working closely with the city. That's where the resilient San Bruno team will come into play, working closely with the city, uh, to get, you know, data and detailed information on vulnerability with respect to climate change. And then from there we'll have, uh, a plan with a, uh, project, a number of project opportunities identified and a, a project concept that will come out of this effort as well. So here's a, a picture of what we're talking about in terms of, um, what is potentially a complicated idea, but, uh, we have conducted analysis of climate hazard exposure, uh, for each infrastructure asset category. So for stormwater flood, um, sewer and water supply, looking at, uh, number, the, the different climate hazards that I mentioned, sea level rise, precipitation, uh, groundwater intrusion, heat, drought. And so the visuals here are showing the, uh, basically the outputs for different climate scenarios. Uh, mid-century on the current left, uh, with a sort of intermediate greenhouse gas emission scenario. And then building to the right, going up to an end of century, high emission scenario for the different climate impacts we're looking at. And I'll just note that the, um, the boundaries, so the geographic boundaries there are actually the water infrastructure uh, and asset utility services. So it's a little bit different way to think about it. But you're looking at the, basically the compound risk of these climate hazards on different types of water infrastructure at that scale. And, uh, there's a dashboard as a question, website that gives, uh, ground and the results. Uh, so the next phase is to implement a pilot application in the San, San Bruno Creek watershed. And, uh, this will start, um, in the, the coming months here. And, uh, that is that we'll go through that multi-step process. So step one has really been done already. We have a resilient, um, uh, San Bruno team established. We have our agencies collaborating table, uh, and we have partnerships formed. Step two will be applying the, the watershed scale, uh, vulnerability assessment work to the San Bruno Creek watershed area. And, uh, climate research communities will need a vulnerability assessment process with, uh, getting data and input from community members in San Bruno. And then step three will be working with, uh, the resilient San Bruno team, the project management team and importantly, uh, the city of San Bruno staff to identify potential climate projects. And, uh, those projects could come from existing planning documents that are already available to the city. Uh, we have a county-wide sustainable streets master plan that will be referenced. Um, it likely involve or include the initial project at my two eighty three. We envision the, the intercoaster project at the Bel Air, uh, elementary school and so on. And so we'll have a, a list of opportunities that address the need and, um, potentially new opportunities as well as here from members of the city. And then we'll prioritize, uh, these projects to maximize the climate hazard resilience benefits. And, uh, we will have a plan in place to reference for future funding and. And I wanted to just finish here with a few examples of what, you know, what could be, um, results from this work longer term. So here's a, an example of what calls sustainable streets and this is El Camino Real, uh, in Colma. And the vision here is to get a wholly, uh, retrofitted street, potentially a road diet with, uh, separated vitaline and clean infrastructure. And, uh, you can imagine that this is a resilient type of project to address climate change as well. There's a, a school, uh, ground that could be converted into a more, uh, resilient landscape with seating for students and smelt water quality, flow management benefits. Trees are, are also really important factor here and site condition. And going from a basic landscape to a more water Presleyan landscape. And this could be done on, uh, public property as well as private, private. So the next steps for the projects are to, uh, finish up the draft reports, finalize the report in February, March. We will conduct the, uh, pilot studies in San Bruno, workshops in spring and the final plan. That, uh, thank you for having me. Happy to take any questions back.
Thank you very much for the information, presentation and for being here. Is there any, any questions or comments from council? Seeing here and none, is anybody from public?
No speaker.
So I want to thank you again. Thanks for being here. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, that will conclude, um, our presentations and announcements. We'll move on to item six, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented by earlier council actions, being acted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be a single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate quote. For items six A through six H, are there any separate quotes? Are there any ones to be pulled for comment or question? Seeing and hearing none, any public comment?
I have no speaker.
Bring it back to council for action, please. Second, motion Salazar, second, Hamilton, to approve consent items six A through six H. All those papers say aye.
Aye.
Being opposed, passed unanimously, five oh. With that, on to item seven, conductive business.
Consider adoption of resolution providing asset purchase agreement with Comcast of California nine eight for the sale of the San Bruno City Net Services, authorizing the city manager to take certain actions in connection therewith and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. Now turn it over to our director of city net services, please.
Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sandeep Prasimulthi, the Director of San Bruno City Net Services, uh, here this evening to present the asset purchase agreement Comcast, uh, for the sale of city net services. The agenda for my presentation starts with the objective, going into a bit of the background, uh, the same terms and price, evaluation and financial implications, and ending with a recommendation. How to further this presentation is to approve asset purchase agreement Comcast for the sale of the San Bruno City. City Net Services, authorizing the city manager to take certain actions in connection therewith and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So, uh, city net was established in nineteen seventy one. As of twenty twenty three, city net had made a negative equity position in the general file of twenty one point five million dollars. Uh, the council recently affirmed the financial year twenty twenty five initiative to stabilize city net's fiscal situation, uh, initiated which was drafted last year as well. And in April twenty twenty four, uh, we issued a request for interest. And in June twenty, actually, uh, there's a slight correction here. We issued a request for interest in December twenty twenty three. In April twenty twenty four, we issued a request for proposals. And in June twenty twenty four, on the basis of interest and a proposal expressed by Comcast, we, uh, the city council authorized, um, the city manager to execute a letter of intent with. Any terms and price? As per that we went on the table today, uh, city net will continue to operate as it does today. And the city will continue to bear all costs, receive all customer revenues under the closing of the sale. The agreement has several conditions to meet prior to closing. First of all, Comcast must establish a physical interconnection of Comcast cable system from the surrounding areas with the city net cable system here in San Bruno. Uh, the system that is sitting in it must have at least five thousand internet customers at the close of the transaction. And the close being time the interconnection is established. Uh, closing must occur within one hundred and eighty days following execution. The next, the purchase price Comcast will pay for sitting in assets, the closing is eight million dollars. Uh, the purchase price will be reduced, total customers fall below fifty four hundred at city net prior to closing. Uh, Comcast will also withhold ten percent of the purchase price for one year from the date of closing to secure the city's internality obligations. So following the close, the agreement provides for a transition of up to six months. And during which the city must continue to operate city net while Comcast performs technology upgrades and physically transitions customers area by area to Comcast service platform. So the city during this period has transferred all customer revenues to Comcast less a management fee retained by the city in the amount of seventy five dollars per customer relationship per month, uh, to cover the city's costs of operating and maintaining the system during this transition period. Uh, the sale does not include any real estate, real estate assets occupied by the city net, the city net vehicle fleet or city net employees, nor will any city net vendor or other contracts be assigned to Comcast with a few exceptions. The city net employees will continue to pick out the existing memorandum of understanding. The substantial implications of this deal, two city reviews were more than twice. The first is that city net just shuts down, uh, for which, uh, city staff projected a potential loss of one point eight to two point five million dollars to the general file. The other side of this would be that the disposition of city net would be at the city's discretion and pretty much their timing. Now, on sides, city net customers would lose connectivity service and there's no sale value offset losses. If city net were to be sold to Comcast, there's a projected net loss again of one point seven to one point nine million dollars. Upsides from this transaction would be that the city would receive the eight, the remainder of the eight million dollars sale price and they would be continuity of service for city net customers. Then outside, the same time would be tight to Comcast, the connection and upgrade connection. Successful impact of this transaction, as the sale proceeds and closes, the city will receive eight million dollars, less any reduction for loss of customers as provided in the asset purchase agreement. Costs associated with the negotiation, complications and transitional assistance in net service and any actual indemnification claims uh, received now or going forward. Um, this deal agreement itself from environmental matter. Congratulations. Subject of public comment and questions and comments, uh, please drop a description. Proving asset purchase agreement with Comcast of California for the sake, for the sale of the San Bruno City Net Services, authorizing the city manager to take certain actions in connection therewith and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So this brings me to the end of my presentation. I'm open to any questions. Is there any other comment?
I have no speaker.
Same view.
Why?
Questions, comments for our director? Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Director, for the presentation. I have just one question about, uh, about, uh, costs and, and why anything's done. I know that one of our, one of the biggest costs, if not the biggest cost of, of operating the city net is the cost of content. And the, the contracts that we enter into with various providers for, for, um, uh, television content, are we locked into any long-term, um, agreements that we all have to continue to pay after this thing for this all goes down? Or are we probably for short term, so we'll be able to close out at the appropriate time?
Uh, we have done research into these contracts and it meant that, uh, the maximum length of time for which we need to give notice for the, for the end of these contracts is a hundred and twenty days. Okay, so we are covered with the transition period in any. Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments, colleagues? Chief, Councilmember Salazar?
So, in terms of the timing, uh, uh, so, so the language says that we have to maintain certain number of customers, five thousand number until the close. And then there's a six-month transition period after the close. And I just wanted to verify that I understood this correctly, that we only need to maintain five thousand up until that deal close, that, that six months. That should, it's expected to, uh, get smaller as they take on some of those customers. So we're not expected to maintain that level during that additional time, right? Correct?
Uh, mostly correct. Uh, there's a couple of variations here. One, we have to maintain five thousand internet customers or five thousand four hundred customer relationships. So that's the minimum threshold and right, it's to the point of close. After which, in any case, there's going to be disruptions in the number of customers because there's going to be a planned transition of those customers from city net or to Comcast as they upgrade area.
Thank you. See you, man.
Yeah, well, we, uh, we have presented some Comcast here and the audience would like to introduce themselves and make a brief presentation to you as well. This was, you know, I guess I just to introduce ourselves so we are familiar with who our new, uh, internet providers would be, so.
Comcast, David? Well, 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 this isn't always easy to do, but we'll pause the city. I'm sorry, we'll pause the city council and, and as the city manager asks.
I've been promised we will be brief.
That's fine.
Uh, thank you. Bottom layer, council members, thank you, and the rest of the team. My name is David Cash and I'm the Regional Security Vice President for the California market. That is a CEO or COO for all of our connectivity business within the state. Generally speaking, Comcast serves everything from Santa Barbara North. Uh, there's exceptions to that across the state. I first wanted to say that we're going to introduce a couple of my teammates as well. Uh, Jacob Mitchell, who leads all of our consumer growth, uh, part of our business. And Jonathan Fisher, who's our head of engineering and construction with our business. He's going to have a couple of brief things to say. The first thing I want to say is that it has been a great partnership. A lot of folks working on this on our side and on the city side. And it's been, uh, uh, in, in almost every instance, a lighter to work with it. We're through some of the challenges that, that we have had. I feel like we've landed in a really great spot. Uh, also want to recognize these aren't just, uh, uh, the internet customers or we say in the business, uh, an RGU, a revenue generating unit, we realize your, your friends, your family members and residents in San Bruno. So we don't, we don't take that lightly. And I guess last, before I turn it over to the team, um, we believe we have a very, uh, focused and clear plan on how we will execute that in the best ability from both of us. Uh, we have no desire for anything to drop below the, the fifty four hundred. We do everything we can to keep every customer in house and pay the premium dollar. There is no intent to do anything other than that. And we think they have a really smart transition plan, which I think, uh, Jacob is going to come up next, uh, and talk a little bit about that.
Thanks, David, and hello, Mayor and council members. Uh, I'm Jacob Mitchell. I lead our self-marketing team in California and I think about this evening, all the participants come through my shop. And so really excited to be here today, especially because a lot of people have asked us to be present in San Bruno. So it's, it's good to be here today. Um, when I talk about our, our products and services, I'm going to talk about our, our residential side as well as our Comcast business side, which serve both. Um, the first off is our, our most reliable internet, have an internet service that is extremely reliable and is one of the fastest in the country. And the best part about it is we serve all customer segments. So it can be a customer that needs less of our service for those that need more premium services. And so we feel like we have a spot for all customers to land. Um, from there, we go to one of our most exciting, uh, uh, products called spending mobile. Uh, eight years ago, we decided to get to the mobile industry, uh, to compete with some of our competitors that offer other products and hidden. And this time we've been able to make revolutionary strides. We're able to offer the fastest internet speeds to mobile services as well as having the most spalling profits, which is one of the cheapest in the industry too. And that's been very good for our customers. We only have a billion customers here in California and we know that in a good service in San Bruno. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about entertainment services. When you talk about NBC Universal, one of our parent companies, you talk about Teacock as well. We have such an opportunity when it comes to entertainment services. But also we have one of the best platforms that I know a lot of people want to use when it comes to TV entertainment. And then lastly, home automation becomes, it's going to need, uh, home. We have the best security and automation for taking care of our customers. So that's all, that's all that we do for the presentation side. But I'll transition to the business side and we look at the business side for us. We have, as I talk about our land building, we have a number of lineups when it comes to Comcast business. But we also have independent services. So we not just servicing our small businesses. We do small business, medium business, large business as well, where we have a lot of services for those folks. And so we know that we're able to offer the top products and services, well as cybersecurity is at top of mind for our businesses. As we look forward to servicing the businesses here in San Bruno. And with that, I'll be able to ask off to Jonathan Fisher.
Well, thank you and thank you, uh, on the mayor, uh, council and staff for allowing us to be here today. I echo the, um, assessments of both David and Jacob about our excitement to be here. I need to talk about how we plan to do that transition, bring these great services to the, um, to the, uh, citizens of San Bruno. Uh, one thing it takes is really great network to be able to provide this. So we're. So we're really excited to kind of build on the foundation. The city that is already, uh, built in terms of the network and bring enhancements that we believe will really, um, uh, enhance the experience of the customers that are already here and hopefully that's for the future. Um, it is our vision and it is our strategic plan, uh, to make this minimally disruptive to the customers during the transition period. So that is our goal in our, uh, strategic planning. Also to make it seamless as we move customers from CitiNet services over to the Comcast services, uh, during that transition. Uh, we will have comprehensive support, uh, available, uh, and that's going to be on different fronts. We will have pop-up stores that will be available for customers to visit. We know that there are customers that are used to paying bills in person and visiting in person and seeing a face. We'll also have, uh, three-four-seven dedicated website where they'll be able to get information, uh, and, and kind of stay up to date on how we plan to move throughout the city and what our activities are like. Uh, so we're super excited about being able to bring, uh, those resources, uh, along with the resources. Have a, the team of network technicians and, uh, service technicians that are available to take care of customer needs and plan to, uh, to really roll out a great carpet from San Bruno and make sure we have a world-class experience for you as we go through the trajectory. That all covered over here.
And just, uh, real briefly, including, we talked, you heard a little about products and services, a little bit about, you know, some of the company's scale, where we're going for the future of technology. One piece that is very unique to our company is we also have a very strong commitment to community investment. Uh, we have, uh, over three thousand employees in the state of California. Um, about a third of that is here in the Bay Area, so approximately a thousand folks. They have several that live right here in San Bruno. I myself live in the, in the East Bay. Um, and, uh, you know, we already have our scoring opportunities for community investment here in San Bruno. What do I mean by community investment? So we have a, a initiative to spend over a billion dollars in the next, it got started two years ago, so the next, uh, uh, eight years, uh, in community investment, and that's everything from. Alex made the joke, we walked in, I said, would you do facilities? He says, do you want to sponsor it? And he walked away and I said, yeah, we probably do. Uh, it's the kind of project that we do. We do business with the Boys and Girls Club of San Francisco, like United Way, uh, Hidden Genius, which has gotten a lot of notice, uh, in Oakland. So it's a big part of what we are and we do. We live, work right here in our communities and a big part of the community. So thank you. We'll pause for any questions, uh, councilor, staff, or anyone else else.
Thank you very much. Uh, appreciate you. Man, you say you had that flow perfectly, just like you've done it before. I will, okay. Uh, so did that, um, Councilmember Alvarez, do you have any comments at this time? Oh, no, oh. Uh, Vice Chairman Dean, you did.
Um, thank you very much. Uh, thank you for coming down. Um, so from, from now to closing, will it be time, there's the attempt to retain the existing customers, but is there going to be an attempt to get new customers? And then how does that affect the deal? Is it the overall number that you have by the end of the time? I just want to make sure, my biggest concern is if, if it doesn't get to the point where we, we don't close the deal. And then what happens then? But I want to just hear if we are going to partner to actually increase the subscriber base, then, uh, one of my fears, I think, will be, okay, this is what is going to happen because Comcast is going to come in and typically there's, at any time, everybody gets in the mail or internet like they're special, right? If I like joined this and it's this long and, which is one of the reasons why it was so difficult for San Bruno to compete with these other providers, it's like, we didn't have that capital to be able to put into increasing our subscriber base. So I was wondering if somebody could, if you, you're not in your head, so yes, kind of walk the public through because the question that people, lots of us are getting are, oh, residents, like, so what's going to happen? Like, so do I need to start looking now or so if we can share that information of whether the effort is going to be for Comcast to say, hey, everybody, don't go to anywhere else. Here comes the, the night of shining armor. We're going to, we're going to make this really a good deal for you. Uh, that's kind of, I think, what people are concerned.
I think it's been working and it's taken a lot of time, that exactly. The day we sign, we already have a joint press release that will go out, alerting customers and it's happening. Uh, and as we close, that's when we can really, um, get into what we're going to be doing. Up until the close period, that we have the ability, we think, from our lawyer, Alex, right? I think that we can have conversation about exactly what you're describing. What would be the retention and acquisition strategy during that period to ensure we don't? As I said, I don't want to give a customer, a single less customer than fifty-four hundred. We have no desire to pay anything less than the eight million dollars. So we have invested interest in several conversations with, uh, with Alex and I. Couple of really nice ones over the holidays, actually, um, that got us to this point. And so we will work diligently to figure out what does that look like. Uh, whether there is aggressive acquisition, new customer add, I think that is less likely than doing something on the retention, keeping the customers that we have.
Great, thank you.
Salazar. I just wanted to thank you guys for coming. Yeah. This, uh, I, I believe this decision for us is not going to be easy. With this, uh, this is something that had in our city for a long time. I think our residents have come to depend on, on not only the service, but, you know, our ability to manage it and tailor it locally. So being that it's not an easy decision, I do appreciate, uh, all of you coming here and, uh, sort of reassuring us that, uh, that we're, we're leaving it in good hands. And, uh, I hope that that partnership, uh, will continue and go through the best. We'll be doing this dance here for, for a while, and so, uh, I think this is a great start to it. So thank you for making the time.
Thank you, thank you very much. And we'll make sure you have all our right contact information for the transition periods. Anything you see and hear from, from, uh, folks, residents, and we want to be able to address those, uh, head on. And I think, uh, capitalize on, Councilmember Salazar said, it is true that, you know, this is something that's been here since nineteen seventy-one. I remember going to the building that got dedicated for meeting, which was dedicated for Leo Ben Duta, who worked at City Hall. So there's that history, right, to the community, to us. Um, the other thing is, is that there's, uh, a lot of the condominium associations, like Shelter Creek as an example, that were solely just with us. And so that to me is a critical element that needs to be reached out. And what I've learned from folks who are, who manage is that the, you want to be able to tell your board of directors something before it happens. Um, she reached out to me because there was some letter that came in the mail, which is a solicitation for something else. But the point is to trigger her because the board was now coming to her because the residents at Shelter Creek were doing that. So I think that's kind of, that is a critical point. Um, and I think maybe what the vice president was asking is, let's say I have San Bruno, I, I'm sorry, CityNet Services, old days, uh. I think, is it, is it simple? Is it that easy? Like, yeah, there's not all of this big appointment. She won't have to go and tear up the house. I bought the the home. And I think that's what people maybe, maybe if you can just touch on that a tad. Yeah, I'm not going to put an actual percentage on it, but I would say the vast majority fairly settled. Uh, the way that, uh, Jonathan and the team have designed this, and it's our engineers in Philadelphia, we have Denver as well as Jonathan globally. So this is like, this is us on a map. You're designing that. What we're going to do, uh, is that, uh, it will be fairly seamless. What it will take is new equipment in the customer zone. Uh, but we plan on having that done real time, street by street, block by block, in some cases, house by house. So there isn't downtime and it will be virtually seamless. We have, uh, 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 pricing and packaging in place that will be almost identical. In some cases, it's actually will be better speeds, not in some cases, better speeds in several instances. The same pricing they're currently paying for at least a year. So kind of out of the gate, one year, they're going to have the services they have today and better. We probably just need to spend, what, twenty minutes to help? Um, because assuming there aren't, as I say, the vast majority, you could have, you know, there could be a staple and a cable inside the house. There's, we don't, don't have too much return, too much noise in the system, might need to do some rewiring. But generally speaking, it's taking the existing piece of equipment that they're holding on their set-top box and, and swapping it out. So we feel pretty confident that we can do this fairly seamlessly. In the case of the M P U, again, as soon as we sign, we have a whole team that is dedicated, uh, to the apartment building, uh, multiple dwelling. You know, we have a whole team that's dedicated to that part of the business. Very, it's not business to us. Uh, some of it will transfer just to a straight retail, some of it will not, in the case of the bulk agreement as you described. And we would want to work diligently to ensure that that gets swapped over in that same smooth, simple transition.
Thank you. Do we have a public comment? Did you have a public comment? So, can I ask a, oh, I just, just a quick survey. Sure.
Thank you. Just a real, just a really great question about, uh, regarding transition for internet customers. Um, is, is there, just based on, on past acquisitions of this type or whatever, how long can folks expect to be able to keep their current San Bruno cable email addresses? Because I assume that the domain would transfer to Comcast as part of the sale, uh, and that there would be a period of forwarding. I'm remembering like, you know, twenty years ago that I was transitioning to Comcast and went to the city for a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, we'll give that for you.
Uh, I might be.
Okay, good.
Uh, for the agreement, for the agreement, it's for, it's up to one month beyond the closed transition. One month, one month beyond the closed transition. So let's say the interconnection is established, the close happens, yeah, let's say two. And six months from that point is the transition period. So seven months from that point is how long people have it. Regardless of where they are in that street, alley, streethouse, by that, it's sort of guaranteed and then we.
Got it. Thank you very much. Subsilken. Um, we have a public comment. Thanks, Senator.
Merriam-歇
I'm sorry, I thought it was someone else.
Oh, no, no, that's.
Yeah, sometimes they wish I was on the phone. Uh, good evening. My question is, um, several months ago, we were told, or we were informed by CitiNet that we were no longer having boxes in our home for cable. And we were told that Roku was the system that we were going to be going to. And we were, we were told to purchase a net that is by Costco, wherever it was. So now our network is all set up on Roku. And now you're saying that you want to come in and bring another box in? Or did you wire him in the house or behind the internet as well? Then, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
Um, the, now they want to bring in equipment again. All we've got is a modem or the router right now, so they want to bring in other equipment to be able to use the streaming service. I'm confused. And considering that we have four TVs in my house, we bought four Roku sets, we've got all these other things going on, and I end up programming all of it. So can you explain to me please? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do you want, Sandy, if you want to take this, or?
Uh, I can take a stab.
All right, why, why don't you, how, how about both? Worked here, how's that?
Let me actually ask the question of Comcast. I presume that your Comcast Flex product has an app on Roku.
Uh, we, we do. We have a variety of options for customers for different levels of service that you could keep in your exact same setup that you have. The exception may be, in not knowing the entirety of the customer base, we have certain levels of service, our higher tier levels of video service that do require a small set-top box. So we depend on what you have. We have apps on multiple platforms for Flex product. We have a new product that's launching in the next thirty days. That's going to be news, sports, a local broadcast, are very affordable. So I think to, to keep you exactly like you are today, uh, then it would probably require a set-top box. If you are in a higher tier of service, um, there are also other options that will be available, uh, that we can work through with customers as well. Good, thank you. No other comments? Any other, uh, questions, comments, and colleagues? Okay. So this is an actual item that has been, uh, brought forward to us by staff. Uh, and, and thank you, uh, Comcast for being here, uh, speaking and offering some of that information, uh, to us. And I think, as I've already said, this is a lot of history for San Bruno. So we appreciate, uh, informing us and taking the questions, et cetera. So, Councilmember Hamilton.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion, uh, as you said, this is a, this is a bittersweet, uh, uh, a time that's, as, as the, the mayor mentioned, this is, um, your screen has been in San Bruno for, uh, most of our, most of our lives. And, um, so it's not something that we take lightly. But, um, given that, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as read by the city clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion by Hamilton, second by Alvarez, to adopt the resolution as read by the city clerk for item seven A. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? I think it'll be recorded as a five-o vote, um, for item A and the resolution to have been passed. And again, uh, thank you for your time. Um, I think you, you know, it's, it's here and it's, uh, something that changes hard. And so, uh, a lot of memories, but, uh, maybe there'll be, uh, great memories going forward. Thank you. Next, let's go on to item B, please.
Consider introducing reading by title summary and waiving a further reading of an ordinance entitled in accordance with the city council of the city of San Bruno, repealing chapter ten point two four, municipal cable television and communication system, and amending chapter ten point two A, state video franchises, and writing such items from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Russia Smith.
Hi, Seena. Yes. Thank you for all my names. Sometimes I forget to introduce myself. Good evening, Honorable Rickelvi Medina, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Star Smith, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here tonight to present some exciting municipal code amendments. My favorite bodies of work for the city. So we are here tonight to consider an ordinance which would amend our municipal code, some little-known chapters. It would repeal chapter ten dot twenty-four, the municipal cable television and communication system chapter, and then amend chapter ten dot twenty-eight, state video franchises. And I'll walk through in detail the reason for that, since you probably aren't super familiar with these obscure chapters. So there is also a little-known federal law called Divka, uh, or state law Divka, the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of two thousand and six. And that is incorporated to the California Public Utilities Code. And with this proposed sale of CitiNet to Comcast requires changes to this title. Um, important, important to note that Divka doesn't apply to municipal cable systems like CitiNet, so this didn't come up. Uh, but it does apply to private companies like Comcast. So one chapter, chapter ten dot twenty-four would be repealed entirely. That's the chapter governing CitiNet. And then it won't, wouldn't be relevant as it relates to our public infrastructure, internet and cable system. And also important to note that that ordinance would only be in effect, um, until the closing date is, is finalized. So for some reason, things don't proceed as we planned, um, there, this would not go into effect. So that's just important to note. And then chapter twenty, ten dot twenty-eight would have some very minor amendments, which are very important, um, to allow the city to exercise our regulatory authority over these private companies, um, like Comcast, who hold state video franchises under Divka and allows to collect the very important franchise fees, um, and let alone peg fees, private, public educational government access fees. Again, important to note, I think you are familiar with the franchise fee that we traditionally collected from CitiNet. So this just allows us to collect it from the private company. And no physical impact of this, other than the staff and attorney time spent preparing it, which is part of our operating budget, and no environmental impact, as this is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. So with that, we can take public comment, should anyone have a comment, and then any questions. But the recommended action is as read by the city clerk, which is to adopt the ordinance. And then repealing chapter ten dot twenty-four and making the minor amendment to ten dot twenty-eight.
Thank you for the report. Any public comment?
Yes, you go first.
Question, comment for Alex?
Seeing very none, uh, this is, uh, asking, asking for action by the council on, on this, return the action. Oh. Oh. Motion to approve the, um, action.
Is there a second? Councilwoman, vice city, say that. Uh, motion, Hamilton, second, Salazar. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Be recorded as a five-o vote. Now we'll move on to item A. Thank you, Doris. On item A, council committee report, Alex, are there any?
Um, Mr. Hamilton. So I have a report up from, uh, January sixteenth, uh, meeting of the Bay Area Water Spine Conservation Agency. Uh, we elected our new chair and vice chair for both Douska and the, um, Bay Area Regional Water System Financing Authority, which is an entity that exists in order to authorize any financing that may be needed for projects. Um, that particular authority has never had any meetings or actions so far during my term on the board, uh, for the past. during my term on the board, uh, for the past, uh, four-plus years. Uh, Director Tom Chambers and Director Louis Vello were elected as Chair and Vice Chair, respectively, for both entities, right, our position from last year. Uh, reservations, resident for, storage remains high all around the state thanks to our past two wet winters. Um, total precipitation season is average. Um, but, uh, the upcoming snowpack is dropping below average for the season. Uh, we had a really, uh, wet, uh, beginning of the season and then things are very dry for quite a while. We're starting to drop below average. Um, demand is up because it has been locally dry and people have been watering, uh, in areas where we usually don't expect it. Um, we might be heading to drought, but when our storage, we should be heading for water restrictions in the future. We'll have a better look at this in the late spring when the snowpack begins to melt. We discussed highlights of our current year work plan, dated to include prior items that could require any budget adjustments. And we kicked off our Strategy Twenty-Fifty Project on January first and, um, focusing on tasks that we identified during our spoken address last year. We're going to have workshops with board members and local water management representatives, including from here from San Bruno, uh, for full collaboration on all these efforts. And, um, that's about it. Scheduled for the airport land use, but it was canceled later. So it'll be next time.
Uh, I'll make my quick. I was reappointed by the San Trans Board of Directors to the San Mateo Transportation Authority for the next two years. So I will be continuing to serve on that body. And, and the last, uh, selection committee meeting for Council of Cities, I was appointed by the Mayor of the County to the Bay Area Quality Management, which that will begin March first, that was to, uh, replace Devina Hert for her term. And instead of that, I'll move on to item nine, comments from council members.
Um, just wanted to bring up a couple of things. Uh, earlier this month, I had a Zoom meeting with State Senator Scott Weiner regarding transportation measures. And he was looking for some information on what to do. This is a very complex issue. MTC, our representatives, happen, and Canada certainly have strong views on this. So I would tell my colleagues to sit, listen, there is something in the state legislature that he, it's like a hole. Just put it up there and told that this happened, you know what? And it has to be done by April by Senator and for things to go forward. So I would just say, I would listen because, uh, Caltrans, uh, Caltrain has gone out with a survey. I think, who else? Um, MTC has, VTA, I believe, is going. So everybody's trying to figure out what to do and what's the temperature in regards to some measure. Um, just as a, no, I had a Zoom meeting with the resident who just was concerned already that Fourth of July is not far off. It falls on the weekend, which usually means extra activity. And her concern or question was just a matter of, you know, are we doing anything different because it's weekday weekend? Um, I wanted to also say, I had a meeting with the San Bruno Alliance Rotary President, Vice Presidents, gave some updates for San Bruno. And we talked about areas of interest and on community projects that are important, like the Nerea Sister City, uh, program. And we will be meeting, they wanted to meet again next quarter. So I thought that was good. Uh, we have not done that, so that was something that, uh, was suggested by Chris Sherry, the Rotary. So, um, I think everybody walked away feeling good about that opportunity to sit down. And I, I got to give it to the radio club that started on January seventh and had twenty, twenty-seven folks, I brought up, first man, the throw's pack. So, um, they've done a good job. And I also, people have said, you know, what's, what's happening as far as Mills Park or not? And I have never met the Williams. So I did have a meeting in person with, uh, Mr. Williams and also his son. And just to understand where, where they're at, where we're at, uh, and what might the future hold or not. Uh, anyway, um, I thought it was important. I think somebody had suggested to me like, you know, what are you doing about development? So I took that opportunity to meet with them for the first time and to get a better understanding. Um, with that, that's it for me and nobody else has any. So what we will do before nine o'clock, unless we want to sit here till nine, we could do that. Uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular City Council meeting, which will be held February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, at seven P.M. meeting adjourned.